Wait for you for five seconds. Please raise your hand, I mean, please raise your hand. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, April 4th. Second.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Okay. Next, do we have any public comment regarding any resolutions today? If not, we will move on to resolution. And we have Dan from County Engineer.
Morning.
Good morning.
Awesome weather outside.
Yes.
Oh, man.
Let's see what we have. I've got three resolutions for your consideration today. First resolution is finding that public convenience and welfare requires the reapplication of pavement markings in various townships in Medina County. The second is accepting and awarding the bid for the Chippewa Lake Main Drive cul-de-sac recirculation project in Lafayette. And the third is lifting the weight reductions on improved county and township roads. And then our weekly permits.
Move to approve the three resolutions. Second.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jeremy Sinko, our sanitary engineer.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing change order number one for the Medina County sanitary engineers' office renovation project. And the second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to replace a portion of the concrete driveway at the Liverpool wastewater treatment plant through equalist competitive bidding.
Move to approve the two resolutions. Second.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Holly Murin, human resources director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
On our personal changes resolution today, we have six new hires, two in maintenance, one at office rollover adults, and three at the county home. Three rate increases, one in sanitary and two in maintenance. One promotion in sanitary, one leave of absence in commissioners, one return from leave in sanitary, and one deceased employee in transit. And our second resolution is amending the table of organization for the Medina County Transit Department.
Move to approve the two resolutions. Second.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Thank you, Holly. Next up, we have Chris Jacob, county administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First resolution this morning authorizes appropriation changes for the sheriff's office and the drug testing fund. Next resolution authorizes a cash transfer reversal for the emergency management agency. This, there was a cash transfer performed twice inadvertently, one in January for the general fund appropriation amount of $80,000. It was also duplicated in March, so we're correcting that error. Next resolution performs cash transfers for print shop services delivered in the month of March. Next resolution authorizes the purchase of 6,900 gallons of unleaded fuel for the county gas pumps. Next resolution authorizes a sub grant agreement with the Medina County Metropolitan Housing Authority. This is for a supportive housing program and project, and the amount of the sub grant agreement is $500,000, and this is utilization of the ARPA funds. Next resolution allows expenses for county officials. Next resolution allows claims and authorizes issuance for the weekly bills. And the final resolution, nope, not quite. Yes, this is the final resolution. I'm sorry. Authorizes change order number one for the Medina County Human Services exterior repair project. There are two components of this change order. One is the awning cost, the replacement awning exceeded the original allowance in the budget. And the other one is for some steel investigation work. There's some degradation of the steel support structure in that building. Unfortunately, we're going to be presented with some other subsequent change order requests for that to stabilize that building and the support structure. So keep you posted on that. We have a project meeting at the site Thursday morning at 8:30, which I'll be attending with our facilities manager.
All right.
And yes, that's all I have this morning.
Move to approve the eight resolutions. Second.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we're into department updates. We have Denise Testa, our planning services director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me to present a week late. So I was out of town last week. I have four resolutions for your consideration. The first resolution is authorizing the adjusted change order number one for the Wadsworth South Lyman sidewalk project. The second resolution is amending resolution number 21-0962, authorizing an agreement with Cunningham and Associates for the design of the critical infrastructure project in Lafayette Township. So that project went through a few changes over the last couple of years, and we just need to amend that. Our third resolution is authorizing the Department of Planning Services to transfer CDBG funds from the Lodi Fountain Repair Project to the Lodi Playground Projects, project, and to allow the purchase of additional playground equipment through the state cooperative purchasing program. And finally, authorizing an agreement with Cunningham and Associates for the Lafayette Township ARPA project of Main Drive.
Move to approve the four resolutions. Second.
Discussion?
I just, just to make it clear, the Department of Administrative Services has approved the transfer from the one project to the other within Lodi, correct?
Yes. Yes, we have spoken with them. We do need to do a budget amendment with that, with the CDBG projects, but that will be coming later.
Okay.
So it'll match what our munis system has as well.
Okay. Very good. Thanks.
Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes.
Okay, now for a quick update in planning service. So for May, we are looking forward to reviewing a replat, a final plat, and a preliminary plan, so you can't get more of a cycle than that, as well as a text amendment. So for our May planning commission meeting, the subdivision regulations work group is continuing their work. We will meet again at the end of this month. You pretty much heard all of the updates regarding CDBG and critical infrastructure in the resolutions that I just presented. So those are continuing to move forward. Our proposals for our community housing improvement program, also known as CHIP, we sent out a request for proposals a couple of weeks ago. Those are due this Thursday, April 13th, at four o'clock. So we've already received one proposal, and we may receive a second proposal as well. Other than that, are there any questions?
I do want to point out, because as part of the subdivision group, we've been talking for some time, even before that, about developing within our subdivision regulations, the, as part of the process of development agreement.
Correct.
And the county engineer has a very high interest, as well as our sanitary engineer, in doing that. I've talked to Andy Conrad about this, and we're going to try pushing forward. Andy is trying to put together a document, and obviously, we'll have to bring in the county prosecutor's office to do that. But I think it's very important. We have found over the years that we ought to have those agreements in place because of issues of bonding and, I'll just say, contractors and subcontractors, as you go down the list with some of these projects, are not actually completing the project as was approved. And it's very difficult for us to enforce unless we have this development agreement in place. And other counties have them, and unfortunately, we've not been able to accomplish it, but I just want to at least aware that we are working on that. And my hope is that we would include that in our subdivision rig update.
Correct.
Actually have as part of that process. And I know Andy, I think Andy Conrad is interested, as well as Jeremy, in making sure we get this accomplished this round.
Okay. Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you very much, Denise. Okay, next, we have a few commissioners' resolutions. Our first resolution is a proclamation proclaiming April 2023 as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes.
And I guess Aaron's going to be there to present.
Yes.
Yes, on Sunday.
Yes.
Same day as my parents' 70th wedding anniversary, so.
Wow, impressive.
Yeah, gotta be there. Yeah, you should be there.
Yeah. Our next resolution is approving the appointment of the local emergency planning commission members for Medina County. We have a list attached of the members.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Okay, our last resolution for today. We are appointing members to the Medina County Revolving Loan Fund Committee. We are appointing Brett Thomas to replace Amy Lyon Galvin and Chris Jacob to replace Scott Miller.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion? Roll?
Yes.
Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick? Yes. Okay, next, we have public comments. And we have a special.
Kind of looks like I'd be the first one up for some reason.
Okay.
Mark Frederick, 6146 West Smith Road, Medina, Ohio, United States of America, continent North America, planet Earth, Milky Way solar system. Martians can find me, ain't hard to find me, I don't have to hide from nobody. Couple points today. We'll start off with a nice one. Welcome, Aaron.
Thank you.
Your luck ran out, you met me now.
[laughing].
And I'll screw with you too. From now on, your AA run to me.
That's fine, I've heard that before.
Good. The second one, now I don't know what's going on with this revolving door around here, it's hard for me to keep track of you guys. Whether this is Scott going and Chris returning, are you the one returning now? Are you being replaced or what?
Returning.
You're returning?
Yes, sir.
Were you here some years ago when I used to talk?
I was indeed.
Then you're the one that I had in my mind that I have on my list to talk about.
Oh, good.
Fond memories, because I'm not as senile as most of you pray for. The other half, you're just praying I die, and that ain't looking too good either. Some years ago, I was up there fussing about maintaining my county tax dollar, namely painting those garages over at the county engineer's office. And there was the one that's pretty close to the track, and that's going to be the track of most of my talk today, by the way. And I said, "Well, why can't you just paint it?" And you were the one, as I recall, who told me, "Well, it's too close to the track. We got to get a special permit and all of that." And my response was, "Well, if your painter's got a 25-foot-long rear end, they might be in the way of the train." And your answer to me, "And I'm not as senile as you hope." Good comeback. And I remember my answer, and to this day. Yep. So that's out of the way. Hambley? Nice to see you again. Do you realize that you're the only one left that started me on this track? You, Geismann, and Frederick signed a letter about my mailbox. You poked the bear. Hope you enjoyed it. Are you still alive and growling? And I have to remember one fine event with you two. When, you know the lady with the salt brine, and you threw your tantrum, pounded that gavel, you went nuts about that. That's a good one. And welcome back to you. Well, you know what? For real talk now, it's Easter. Time for me to resurrect an old bone. There might still be some meat on it. Namely, the Medina County Dog Catcher. The last time I was here, I asked for a public information request, which is in there somewhere in my bag of goodies, all garbage. About the dog catcher, two of my dogs ran away. I've been raising German Shepherds, good ones, for 40 years. They're out in the yard, 60 acres, they run around. Two of them took off after a deer. Eh, they'll be back, didn't know where they belonged. My dogs are chipped, they're in junk. Lo and behold, if some good neighbor didn't pick them up and call the dog warden, so I get a phone call, "Come get your dogs." Well, one of them, the chipped came back to the professor from Ashland University that I obtained the dog from. The other one was my pup. So anyhow, went and got my dogs, $30 fine, no big deal. The amazing thing, and here's the meat on that bone I want to pick, when I got the public request information, because I asked for everything about the dog catcher, on there there's a line item for fines for the year. It's a miracle. There was zero fines. Now wait a minute. That document says zero fines, and my receipt says 30 bucks paid for returning my dog. So my question now, on that little bone and on, where did my 30 bucks go? Whose pocket? What fund? I don't know. Now, if you want to have some fun, we could waste a lot of money here. We could play Russia, Russia, Russia. We could play Stormy, Stormy, Stormy. We can play Dog Catcher, Dog Catcher, Dog Catcher, and spend all kind of time and money chasing down a puff of fresh air, you might say, you know? But what I really have a problem with is when public employees lie to constituents. And she, she were here last time, and I know you defended it when I said that about a dog catcher, but when somebody lies and tells me they don't get a penny from the county, I don't have idiot tattooed up there. So that's that one. I'll move on to the next one. You know what? I enjoy screwing with people. I really should have been a whore. Maybe Trump would fine me $130,000.
Mr. Frederick.
Anyhow, like I said, are we prepared? And I ask that to Hanwell and my old school buddy, played in the band with me at John Carroll, Paul Rose, our Medina city councilman. He remembers me. It's only been 50 years. And I asked him, "Are we prepared in case that train from East Palestine flips over in my backyard?" Oh, worse yet, 500 foot south of our square at Medina Farmers Exchange. What if one of those cars rolled over here? Do we know what's in that tank car? And I know the answer is, no, we don't. And I asked the city, when I was at their meeting on Tuesday, Wednesday last week, "What happens if one of those flips over in my backyard? It's 1,400 foot back from my cornfield, but it's still my land." And they promised me they'd save me first. [laughing] I said, "I don't believe you'd take the dogs before he came for me." But anyhow, on a serious note, it could happen. Don't tell me, "Oh, it won't happen here." I forgot to set my timer.
Mr. Frederick, it's time to wrap up.
That's what I figured. Well, anyhow, like I said, we need to be prepared. What I'm asking the county for is a written plan. And it's kind of nice that I brought this up today, because I heard you pointed some new people to the emergency management team. Good, that's who I want. I want to see, and I think we should make it public, because it is a public record, and publish it in the paper, what our action plan is. And we'd better get ready now, because when it happens, it's too late. And I asked Medina Fire if they're ready for it, and I kind of got to run around on that one. And they sent me to the Medina County, and here I am. I would have been here anyhow, but that's okay. Thank you, I'll see you again next time, I've got something on my mind.
Welcome aboard. Thank you.
If I could comment, Mr. Frederick, thank you for bringing that up. Actually, our county does have an emergency operations plan, as well as a all hazards mitigation plan. So we can take a look at that regarding that. I've not reviewed the documents, it's been a while. So we certainly can look at it. I know there has been a concerted effort for numbers of years in dealing with the kind of materials that does, not only within our highways, but also the railroads, and in dealing with those kind of issues. So I'd agree with you, it's time to review that and see if we have everything squared away that we ought to.
And more importantly, my backyard, 25 acres there.
It's always somebody's backyard, so our concern is protecting all of the public, not just your backyard.
I'm seriously more concerned about mine.
I understand.
Is there anybody else? Please state your name and address.
Good morning, I'm John Kales at 1809 Hidro Road. So I usually watch these meetings after they're posted online, and I took particular interest with the Nowaka conversation from last week's meeting. I believe at one point or another, I've spoken with about half this room in regards to Nowaka and their climate action plan. I want to say that I appreciate the hard work that Commissioner Harrison has done representing Medina County and standing up for all of the counties at the Nowaka Executive Board meetings. Per the conversation on Nowaka from last week's commissioners' meeting, it's becoming evident that Cuyahoga County representation of Nowaka is simply not interested in the concerns that we have with their plans. Commissioner Hambley was absolutely correct in his description of the devastation, that a reduction of 63% of greenhouse gas emissions by 2030 and 100% by 2050 were due to the economy of Medina County, what it means for our travel, our homes, and our property rights. Our infrastructure is simply not built to sustain these levels of added stress, while also cutting the ability to generate using the fossil fuels that we are able to now. You brought up perinuclear power plant, I believe that's the one that you were discussing, and being thankful that we have that at our disposal. Now, one of the things that I've heard Commissioner Hammercheck talk about was the potential to convert that over to some form of hydrogen generation. So, you know, I mean, we know the nuclear works, right? So I don't know what it would entail, or what it would take, or the reliability that would be involved there. So I guess my point being is that even the most reliable form of power that we would have would be up for debate at this point. One of the other little things that I wanted to bring up too was, you know, we talk about the greenhouse gas study, you guys were talking about the science behind the numbers, and that was the one thing that was settled. They continue to tell us the one thing that is absolutely settled is the science. You all took issue with that. You didn't necessarily, weren't convinced by their words in that. The science, to me, is kind of bought and paid for. When we look at who paid for those studies to be done, Nowaka has always very quick to point out that it was the Cleveland Foundation and it was the Gunn Foundation. They spent $100,000 to pay an organization that's affiliated with the United Nations called ICLI to come in and conduct this study. A little bit of homework kind of tells you that, you know, who sits on the board of those foundations. And a lot of those people are developers. A lot of those people have interests in Cuyahoga County. And if we start hamstringing Medina County, Jona County, Lorraine County, and Lake County with their ability to travel and do all those things, it's going to bring all those people back into Cuyahoga County. And they're going to benefit from that as well. So I know they're, it's a philanthropic organization and whatnot, but somewhere in there, they're able to use the philanthropy and, you know, the public being a little bit numb to the nonprofit status to possibly rake themselves in some more cash. So I just wanted to bring up a couple of those points. I really, really, really am impressed with the way that you guys have been handling it. I sincerely appreciate it, because it's a major, major concern for myself, and as it should be for everyone else. It's just, the reason this room's not full every time is because the people just are not aware of it. I try to do my part in bringing them, you know, bringing the awareness to them and whatnot. So thank you so much. You have my support, and just about everybody that I talk to supports all your measures as well. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Anyone else with public comment today? Okay, we are going to move on to discussion session. Jeremy, did he leave?
Yep.
I guess he left. Brett, do you have anything?
No.
Dan? Chris, anything more?
No, thank you.
And Steve?
Yeah, I do. Actually, I'm glad you brought up Nowaka. Andy Conrad informed us late Friday with email that he was there regarding, it was a joint meeting of the executive committee, I think, and also the financial audit committee, I think it was. It's one of the committees. Yeah. Because they were dealing with the Climate Action Plan Amendment in the process, making sure it was compliant with the federal requirements. And he had to vote no. He tried to get it amended, that they, that the Climate Action Plan initiatives that they're engaging, that the, it's not going to be used against any community for road funding, for transportation funding. And that was rejected. And I want to thank Andy for trying to make that effort. But it goes, does go to the point of how Nowaka is operated. I can just say historically, when it been in the past, when Nowaka first, when we, I was part of there, when it comes to road funding, every county, not every, every year, basically, we had portions, we had allocated. You can't do it every year, but over a group of years, you should get about the same kind of road funding you need based upon your population. Well, over the years, they eliminated that, and they set up a various point system. And one of the items that Andy is very familiar with, I think that's what kind of highlights the Climate Action Plan, is the pavement condition rating system, the PCRs. And originally, when the PCRs started years ago, they were going to be looking at and evaluating pavements in terms of the condition and reporting it. It makes some sense. And they said, "No, this is only for information. It's not going to be used against any community in determining where the money's going to go for roads." Well, guess what? Now it is. Now it is. That's how it's used. And everybody knows, once you actually do that analysis and the basis of funding, Cuyahoga County does tremendously benefit and leverage, even more than based on their vote. So they have this system using these PCR. The concern is also with the Climate Action Plan. They're just saying, "No, no," and I understand Andy was told, "Oh, no, there's a different committee that will review this," and that they, it was the, is that the Policy and Programming Committee could introduce that. And I, and that certainly is one of the fears, that they will use these initiatives of the Climate Action Plan to, once again, make sure that the money doesn't come here, that it goes to Cuyahoga County. And I, and I just want to point out, when you start researching on the Climate Action Plan that's elsewhere, and maybe California's a bad example, but I think they're a good example, in some ways as to how extreme it can be, and how it might be used, these initiatives be used to hurt our local communities, the initiatives that actually are tied to road funding, like in California, that have to do with the Climate Action Plan, have what they call rezoned to permit by right. In other words, you're going, if you're going to change land from residential, basically, to multifamily, they're saying within it, in order to qualify for road funding, your community has to have the ability to, in other words, the property owner, doesn't have to go through the rezoning, they have the right to do a higher density. It's their right as a property owner, rather than go through a rezoning process, that undermines local planning entirely. And so you can see, and there are points against the community if they don't have this ability. Now, developers are probably like that, and people that want to create a high density, but people in our county, in our townships, in our communities, want to have that local right for zoning decisions, and for planning, and so forth. And yes, there's appropriate areas where you have higher density, and where you have higher, but to say that every property owner, everywhere, has the ability to go ahead and build multifamily residential is, I don't think except, would be acceptable. But then, if you don't want to do that, then of course, there's points against you if you want a road project. And so you can see how our fear is when we look at elsewhere, that they've got these. There's others, actually, you're awarded points in the California plan if you actually eliminate or reduce the number of public hearings for projects. eliminate or reduce the number of public hearings for projects. Now, wouldn't that be a great thing? Why bother with these messy public hearings and letting public know when you're doing these subdivision projects? That's just a messy thing. Well, just go ahead and do them, and you're going to get actually extra points if you eliminate those public hearings, which is, to me, that's not acceptable here in Medina County. We've got others where actually, and I know that's an issue in many of our communities, what we call accessory dwelling units. These are like granny flats, in-law units, backyard cottages, secondary units, and so forth. You're actually, kind of against you if you don't permit. And we know there are a number of communities, as part of their planning, have said, "You know, we want to be able to regulate the ability to put and build multifamily units within some of these residential areas." And I'm not opposed to those, in some communities, that's part of their planning effort, they want to encourage it. But to say across the board, you're not going to get road funding because you don't permit that, or you have a process of review for these units, manufactured homes as well as recreational vehicles, if you have any zoning that impacts those, they would be counted against you for your road funding, which is like, okay, I'm not sure how acceptable that would be. So you start going through this whole list. Likewise, and I know in our subdivision regulations, we're moving from, many of our communities, as they create these subdivisions, prefer not to have, well, I'll just say bike trails and sidewalks put in. If you have low-density residential, it's basically, many of them want to, it's up to local option. I live in a community where you have a new subdivision, of course, you put in sidewalks and all that, but many of our townships don't want that. That actually would be counted against you if you don't actually have it as mandated, as part of your subdivision regulations. In other words, that when we have 10-acre lots in Homerville, they wouldn't be qualified for road funding because they don't have sidewalks, and of course, they don't do subdivisions like we do elsewhere, because of the utilities. But it's all those kind of issues that I think highlight what the extremes could be if we allow that. I contend, overall, it really is about making sure that Cuyahoga County gets as much, if not all, the road funding that we get from the federal government and state through the Metropolitan Planning Organization, as well as, remember, not only if there is funding already coming, they also determine whether we can spend that money. When we talk about interchanges, when we talk about state improvements, they still have the ability to vote and not approve those. So our fear is, I think, well-founded, that these initiatives, and we're not, and I just, this, my comments have more to do with comments made on Facebook and talking to people that think that we're somehow, we're for pollution, we're, believe me, or that we're against recycling, or that, you know, when it comes to air and water quality, that we don't care. No, we do. It's just the mechanisms you use. I sincerely believe that what comes, it's about science, it's about technology, and it's about the free market. Those are the ways that we solve our problems when it comes to air pollution and water pollution, and deal with those issues. We don't do it through government mandates, in kind of the backdoor way of basically removing highway funding in Medina County. So I think that our fears are well-founded, when you take a look at the more extremes, I don't think we would ever get to that point, but I can see that would use this purposefully, Cuyahoga County and so forth, would use, that could eventually end up using these mechanisms to make sure that they've got all the funding, because they have higher density, they've got infill development they want to do. They've got communities that by law, they can't do new subdivisions and so forth without sidewalks, but we, many of our rural areas, that's not how we operate, that's not what we want the communities to develop. And we believe in local control. So I want to make sure that we, that people understand, we're not anti-science, we're not pro-pollution, we're not anti-recycling, no, we're just, we're anti-government mandates that basically are trying to obfuscate the real mission here, which is taking all the money that's coming at the federal and state level for highway funding, and they could spend it all, and we'd see nothing, and they still wouldn't have enough, that they would dominate. And I've seen this in the 90s, I saw it in the 2000s, now we're seeing it again in the 2020s. That's always, that seems to be their mechanism, how they operate, and they want to use this Climate Action Plan, unfortunately, to do just that. And I just thank Andy for stepping up. Hopefully, we'll continue to fight. I know, Aaron, you're continuing, and obviously, we have your back on this, and anything we can do to continue to fight against them implementing this, that will undermine our ability at local control, of our local, our ability to also to have access to the necessary public dollars for our transportation improvements.
Pass public comment, sorry.
Pass public comment, I'm sorry. It's okay.
Sorry. All right.
I do have something to add, though, and I do appreciate your thoughts on that, because it's helpful to have that historic perspective of, and since I've been there, you know, since, you know, earlier this year, it is, my kind of overriding concern has been that the plan or initiative of today becomes the policy of tomorrow. And so it's an easy way, or a convenient way, to garner support by saying, "Well, this is, you know, this is theoretical, this is our plan, this is what we're pushing," as kind of idealistic views, but those idealistic views, pretty soon, are going to become the policymaking of tomorrow, on the framework that it's a regional plan. And you mentioned interchanges, I know we're going to cover that here briefly, but I do think, you know, there's some fundamental failings in the transportation planning arm up there, that are, those fractures are coming clear with the recent state legislation regarding the Strongsville-Brunswick interchange, some other things that we'd like to see that we're going to talk about here briefly, that, you know, those kinds of initiatives, I think, those kinds of battles can be avoided with appropriate and proper regional planning. And my understanding is that's kind of the operation that's supposed to happen up there. And so I do think it's a somewhat fundamental failing, the fact that we're seeing these battles on transportation issues that Noaka should be taking the lead on, and why isn't Noaka taking the lead on those? Because they're busy talking about theoretical policies and climate action and things that really aren't as immediate of a priority, or at least shouldn't be, in Noaka's mandate.
And I've said it before, it's, we use significant Medina County tax dollars to pay our dues to this organization that needs to start listening to the other counties besides Cuyahoga.
Agreed, agreed.
Anything more?
No, no. What, the interchange?
Yeah, so I have, we did allude to that, so this is a good segue into a letter of support that I've drafted for, this is a little bit out of left field, so I'll give a little bit of background on it, but a letter of support for an amendment to House Bill Number 33 that's being pursued, I think, by Senator Romanchuk's office. And this would authorize a interchange south of 18 on 71, in one of the state highways. Yeah, it wouldn't necessarily be 162 or 57, but one of the state highways that intersects in Medina County south of 18. So the letter that I've drafted, that I'd ask for your support on us signing it and sending it off to Senator Romanchuk, references our friends at Noaka in a 2017 study that they completed, where they analyzed both a northern subarea, which is basically the Brunswick-Strongsville location, and a southern subarea, and they did a cost-benefit analysis of that. The least cost-effective Medina interchange, they found, had a four times greater cost-benefit than the most cost-effective Brunswick-Strongsville interchange. Somehow, along the way, the Brunswick-Strongsville one, that Brunswick has consistently opposed, ended up on the Noaka long-range plan, and the Medina one ended up off the long-range plan. And then there were subsequent decisions and policymaking at Noaka that basically put a pin in the entire thing. And I've said this, I think we've all had, taken our turn saying this, that it probably isn't ideal for Columbus to establish where interchanges should happen, but unlike the one they just authorized in Brunswick, this one enjoys local support, the affected governments are all kind of willing to do it if there's a path to doing it. And so if this is a way that now works to get these things funded, I fully support Senator Romanchuk's efforts in that regard, and just would ask that we could put this letter together and send it off to him for further action.
I heartily support this. I think, certainly sends a message, because the process that was utilized for the Boston, for the Brunswick-Strongsville interchange, is just totally outside the normal planning process of the state in evaluating, they're called the track process, where they evaluate, they look at the cost-effectiveness, and obviously, the locals are involved with it, but likewise, the state has to verify that. And I think this just brings the point, is if this is the way you're going to do projects, this brings it back to the era of James A. Rhodes in the 1970s and so forth, where a legislator would sneak, I won't say sneak, will skillfully place interchange in a budget that has nothing to do with transportation. That's what this does. And indeed, what it comes down to is, kind of highlights the point, is if this is the way the state's going to operate, well, then, fine, we're next in line to go after something that, and actually, I believe not only does it approve, provide the process, it provides the funding. It directs ODOT will have to find the money out of their massive budget to actually fund it, which means no local match requirement, which would be a good thing. So, I mean, it's, so at this point, certainly, it presents the opportunity to highlight a gross error in their approach in the Strongsville-Brunswick, but I think it also highlights a significant error on the part of our, of our Noaka, our MPO, and our process of identifying interchanges that are very much needed within the region, because they obviously have a, it's just across the board, they're against any interchange that's not in Cuyahoga County.
It's an excellent letter, Aaron.
Yes, it's very good.
Even though it's going to Senator Romanchuk, I think I'd like to email a copy to Rep. Ray and Rep. Miller.
Yes, I think that's great. Actually, his amendment is prepared as amendment at the Senate level, and they're going through, the House has their versions that they're working through. So I think giving them, that affords them the opportunity to be aware, this could be introduced as part of the, this is, House Bill 33 is the operating budget.
Right.
So, but it's going back, it's still yet to come out of the House, they're doing the markups and reviewing all the amendments this week in the House. So this would be the time to send it.